It is 7 o'clock and I hereby call the January Board meeting of the Village Tivoli Board of Trustees to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Trustee Azroti is not here this evening, so I don't know if we'll have a zoning report. Did you get a zoning report from Trustee Azroti? Unless there's one in the book perhaps?
Usually it goes directly to even to Deputy Treasurer.
It looks like there is one. I'm just skipping around the agenda for a moment. I apologize. There are a couple of issues that have been reported by the zoning enforcement officer. One looks like an installation. Somebody says installation and emergency and it's $4,000, but I don't know if that's a fine or not, and it's on Pine Street.
There's an events report there.
Thank you. That's... Thank you very much. There are, one, two, three. I apologize. There are two violations noted by the zoning enforcement officer. One is regarding a violation letter that was sent to a resident here in the Village Tivoli regarding a porta potty that has been located in her front yard for far too long. So this individual received a violation notice. And then we also received a complaint from a resident regarding the amount of litter that's been strewn around throughout certain areas of the village. The zoning enforcement has, zoning enforcement officer has been up here, has made contact with the property manager. So I just wanted to get that out of the way because I know that Trustee Azroti usually provides that report. You've all had an opportunity, I hope, to take a look at the agenda. At this point, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to address the board on agenda items only. Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there's no discussion. It's a pretty straightforward housekeeping agenda tonight. My guess is that we'll wait until the end of the meeting for public comment unless anybody has anything. Seeing no comments from the public, is there a motion to return to regular business?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider and seconded by Trustee Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Clerk Gennella for our Clerk's Report, please.
Yes, we called 6,000, 6,000 tags, quick trash tags. We did kind of a planning board workshop in the ZDA meeting, budget workshop for the city's working staff, and W2's work sheet. We also have a holiday coming up on February 16th, President's Day.
President's Day. Thank you very much. Treasurer's Report. Clerk Gennella.
In the general fund, 113,379,30 was spent, and the water fund, 52,8237, and the sewer fund, 32,6425, for a total of 121,925,92. The general fund had a payment to the arid construction for the sidewalks, which we didn't plan to wait it.
It's about $80,000 for arid. There's also a payment for gutter repair work at the firehouse, which is 4,000. Central Hudson at 5,000. Costco, 27. Bond payment for turnout gear for the fire department, 4,000 plus, and our payment to the town of Red Hook with regards to a shared services for zoning, $7,500. At this point, I entertain a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. You've had an opportunity to review the payments. I did highlight a couple of the bills in there. Again, arid is the project that was at the four corners here in front of the Madeline Hotel, the intersectional work that was done. So at this point, I entertain a motion to approve payment of the bills.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Bruno and seconded by Trustee Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We had a very brief zoning report. I don't believe there's any correspondence this month.
Can we do the minutes?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Approval of the minutes. First of all, somehow I managed to miss the minutes from November 19th. So at this point, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes that were submitted by the clerk for the board meeting on November 19th.
And also the budget workshop. Oh, there's a, not a budget workshop, a public hearing project. Just as you mentioned.
Thank you. That was on the interim emergency successor, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And while we're doing that, I'll also ask you to approve the minutes from December as well. You've had an opportunity to review all of the minutes that were submitted. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you for the catch.
And there were also minutes from a workshop on January 14th.
Yes, because we, that was the meeting, the workshop in which the board approved payment for countrywide, countywide gutter replacement for the, for the firehouse.
So those are included?
I will include them now because I didn't mention them earlier. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? They were submitted by Trustee Azroti.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. It's very straightforward. The board approved payment of $3,900 for countywide gutters, for gutter repair work at the firehouse.
I'm sorry, what was stated on the?
It was a week from...
Three, four, two.
Yeah. Last week at the workshop. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Moving on to regular business now. The first item on your agenda is a credit card policy. We discussed this in my office. This is a policy that the village wants to have in place, authorizing the mayor, the members of the Board of Trustees, of course, including the Deputy Mayor, Superintendent Public Works, and the clerk to utilize credit cards that we have here in the Village Tivoli. Currently, we only have two. One is for Staples, the other is for Lowe's. We don't use them very often, but we wanted to make sure that we had a policies who can use them, how much, and making sure the receipts are submitted and so on and so forth. It's pretty straightforward. We actually borrowed this resolution from the New York State Comptroller's Office. We know that it's in line with what the state is directing. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the credit card policy that's been in your packets.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider and seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any discussion, any discussion from the Treasurer that you want to add into the conversation?
No.
No?
It was the State Honorable that is here, mentioned that we didn't have one, so it'll be resolved when he leaves. It'll be mentioned, but it'll be resolved.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. I think it's pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next item on your agenda is the standard work gain reporting resolution for elected appointed officials. This would include Mayor Cranna, Clerk Treasurer Linda Gennella, and Deputy Clerk Claire Roth. It is necessary for the mayor and the Clerk Treasurer to keep a running accounting of the time that is spent addressing village of Tivoli business. It's a straightforward resolution that is necessary by the Comptroller's Office over the last couple of years to make sure that we are doing what we say that we are doing. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve the resolution. It's again, a housekeeping resolution that is necessary as directed by the Comptroller's Office of the state.
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I had asked, Clerk Gennella, do you know if this is an annual requirement or is it every two years?
It is. It is if you're participating in the retirement system.
Right.
Just curious. We didn't have the answer at the workshop, so now I do.
We filed one last year.
Yep.
And I believe that it's just the mayor and the Clerk Treasurer that are participating.
Yes, because of the retirement.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. I'm going to turn the floor back to the Treasurer with regards to budget modifications, which is Resolution 3 for tonight.
4. Resolution 4.
Oh, because you already did the November 19th minutes. I'm sorry. Resolution 4.
There basically, again, housekeeping issues. We received a grant in the fiscal year 2014 that was spent in this fiscal year 2015, so we transferred the funds to cover that. We spent more money than we budgeted for for CHIPS, so we increased the revenue. We had the money, again, these are accounting transfers. Celebrations raised more money as did street paintings than was budgeted for, so we upped the revenue on those.
My hope is that, well, at least the last couple of months when I was in office, but that, and one of the things that we talked about during last year's budget process is that the budget is a moving document. So from time to time, it will be necessary for the board to increase and or decrease lines, that the budget that is adopted by the board is not ultimately the budget that will be at the year's end, so that we can up lines and decrease lines as necessary as things come up, such as gutter repair or unexpected repairs with regards to trucks at pre-DPW or the fire department. There are no further discussions. Is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding the budget modifications?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Thank you for your work on that, Clerk Gennella. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. The motion carries. There will be a, the next board meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be February 18th here at 7:00. Workshop in the Mayor's Office at 6:00. February 11th will be the regular workshop at 6:00 o'clock, also in the Mayor's Office. Let me see if I had any... At this point, I turn the floor over to our committee reports. Deputy Mayor Griffith.
Thank you. Water Department report for the month of December 2014. You all may recall, we had a significant water main break, serious, on December 7th. This was the one at Broadway by the McKnightwell where Clay Hill comes out. It's in that stretch where we had had two breaks also in the past year. It was probably the first, excuse me, really frigid night and the DPW department got out there and did what they could and I also thought it was a tough welcome for Ralph Torshis to our DPW department, but he was down there working hard and we appreciate that. So it did empty the tower. They had the water back to customers within three hours and the tower was back to full in five days. There was a second water main break during the month of December on the 10th, and that was on Madeline Court in a two-inch line. And as always, we have our microbiological samples taken and there were no red flags on that. And while we're in the depths of winter here, cast your minds forward to spring. We're thinking about the community garden. The plots are, as always, eight by 12, $30, gets you a plot per season. If you're interested, contact tivoli community garden at gmail dot com. We have about five plots signed up and we have roughly 14, 15 left, so they are starting to go. So if you want one, please join us. We've had a few people who've done it for a couple of years and can't, so it's going to be a little different mix of people. And at yesterday's Green Committee meeting, we talked about, you know, what to do with the fees. So with these $30 fees in the first year, that paid for the fence. In the second and third years, that went to, starting to build raised beds for the whole garden. We started in the back where it was deepest and soggiest, we're working our way towards the front gate. So this year, we hope to keep going, maybe get all of them done, or at least almost all of them done, because it was a little touchy last year when some folks had a raised bed and some folks didn't. So, tivoli community garden at gmail dot com. And I have another thing to announce to everyone that I'm really excited about. This comes out of our waterfront committee, which is something I'm sure you haven't heard about in a while, but as you know, the village did buy that property down there in 2010 and we've had a hardworking resident volunteer committee who have done something really neat. Before I tell you what it is, I just want to recognize the members of our committee because I don't do that that often. The waterfront committee includes Marty Clark, Mark Bennett, Barbara Eichen, Bonnie Carrato, Kathy Reballo, Phyllis Palmer. Our dutiful secretary is Trustee Susan Azroti, who's not here, and I have the pleasure of chairing that group of hardworking volunteers. Back in September, the committee drafted a letter that we sent to civil engineering departments at about eight universities in New York State. Among them were West Point, Cornell, Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, Columbia. It was something of a hail mary pass. The phrasing of the letter was approximately, you know, "We are the most beautiful small town you may never have heard of. We have a more beautiful waterfront, which you should come visit, and we are hoping to someday make that into a nice park and protect and enhance the public access down there." And this was Susan's phrasing, this wasn't mine. "This will give you a chance to reestablish your reputation or reconfirm your reputation as a premier engineering institution," which we thought maybe that would set them off the wrong way, but it was a little tongue in cheek. So we sent this letter out and we did hear back from RPI. And the Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute professor by the name of Jack Riley wrote us back and said, "This sounds really interesting. I'd like to know some more." So in the last couple of months, we've been talking to him and he's finally fully committed. What's going to happen is, he teaches a course up there. The senior, the title of the course is Senior Civil Engineering Capstone Design, and this is taught by the Environmental Engineering Department at RPI. The purpose of the course is for the students to learn about the process of civil engineering design through working on a practical design problem. And the word problem certainly describes the many challenges and requirements we have down there. So in this course, they, they like to find real world problems, you know, like our, you know, the small amount of real estate, the railroad going through there, the proximity to the water, sea level rise, all those sorts of things. So of course, he seized on this as, wow, this is going to be something great for my students to tackle because it's complicated. And the way they do the course, he breaks his students up into three teams. There is a structural geotechnical team, and that group of students, there'll be about four to six students in each group. They're going to develop a plan for the building project, structural and geotechnical design for the facilities, and develop a construction plan and prepare a cost estimate. Then the team number two is the transportation team, and they're supposed to perform a site design, including parking, pedestrian vehicle circulation, and develop the traffic study for the site, including appropriate traffic control devices. And the third team is called the environmental team, and their task will be to assess drainage, water supply requirements for the site, including fire protection, site remediation if necessary, and overall environmental assessment. So for the village of Tivoli, it's going to be some fresh young minds coming up with some ideas and, you know, we won't be paying them. Their final result is not going to be anything that we can then take and go get a, you know, start building. It's not suitable for actual construction or, you know, but it's preliminary stuff and there, there are a lot of possibilities down there and, you know, the village has explored a few, but we haven't, we didn't sort of tell them much because we wanted them to be free to dream up whatever they might dream up. And so class starts next week and we've supplied Professor Riley with a lot of our surveys and the maps, the materials and stuff. And these students will be coming to Tivoli in the next month or so, and we're going to have them come in and meet the waterfront committee. And I look forward to giving the community updates about how this is going and we'll see what they end up with by, by the end of the semester. So really appreciate Professor Riley and I'm sure we'll be thanking his students as well, but something, something new and exciting happening with your waterfront property. So pleased to, pleased to announce it.
Awesome. That's exciting.
Yes.
It's becoming more of a reality every day, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bruno.
Well, our Deputy Mayor is a tough act to follow today. My segment will be relatively short.
Thank you very much. Trustee Sch, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I do not have, I do not have a lot. With programs and things, our next event will not be until the, until the spring. For summer rec though, we are seeking applicants now for the director and counselor position. So if you know anyone who could be interested in positions like that, please have them drop off a letter with their qualifications addressed to me right in the Clerk's Office so we can start the ball rolling on that. And just back with our, the senior and the veteran communities here, definitely if you have a chance to attend or participate in any of their functions or events, do so. And our library, don't forget, they're down there. They, more and more every day, they have more just classes and, oh my God, book readings and they're doing a lot, so please take advantage of that. Mine was short.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. Go ahead.
All right, my turn. So I think the first thing I'll touch on is our Greenway Grant because it's a nice segue into what our Deputy Mayor was discussing. There's an opportunity there for a little bit of collaboration between RPI and obviously Morris Associates and ourselves here in regard to the design and development of the sidewalks, the lighting, the seating going down to the waterfront property. We did a walkthrough with Morris Associates, Trustee Bruno and I, from Village Hall here all the way down to the waterfront property to have an actual visual to start to identify a lot of the issues that we have, where we would need to cross over. We do anticipate having a solid report, if you will, from Morris Associates. That would include some sample materials, and I anticipate that that would be coming up this month.
I would think so.
Yeah.
They had some excellent ideas.
They had some fantastic ideas, and it's really great to see people who love what they do because you walk them down there and as you're identifying all these challenges, they're getting excited. Oh, look, this is a problem and problem solving is their forte. So I'm really, really looking forward to seeing what comes out of that walkthrough. We will, of course, hold a public meeting in regard to the design, if you will, the plan, so that residents have the opportunity to give feedback and see what has been developed thus far.
We'll ask Morris Associates to give us an idea of where we are money wise. I don't, have we paid anything out on this grant yet, Linda?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We have $15,000 to spend.
Right. And part of that money needs to go for council.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we, get an idea from Morris Associates, what, because the clock is running every time they come up here, to make sure that Linda's aware of how much time they're spending here so that we know when a bill comes in for $9,000.
I think the trustees are going to give me, you know, something to compare to the Morris.
I just want to make sure we, I just want to make sure that they don't go over how much we've allotted. I think we allotted 10. Does that sound familiar? We can go back and look at the notes, but I think we allotted maybe 10 or even less than that for engineering to make sure that council has enough money to do reviews, so.
For anybody in the audience who is confused there, what we're referring to is the fact that we have a matching grant. So we have a finite amount of funds and then the rest needs to be matched by ours committed by either trustees or other volunteers, citizens in the community who want to be involved in the project. So there's a rubric to determine the value of the time that we are devoting to the project that would give us those matching funds.
Because Greenway, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, Greenway, we pay out first and then it's reimbursed. It's not like they give us the money and then we dole out the money.
It's reimbursed.
Wheels are spinning all the time.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That is really all I have to report on the, on the Greenway Grant there. In regard to the Tivoli Village Court for the month of December, charges received were 38, charges disposed were nine, a total of $170 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller. I don't have any real news to report in regard to the Tivoli Business and Artists Alliance. December actually resulted in the cancellation of our meeting, and January is a quiet month here. We've got some businesses that are closed this month, so makes it a little difficult to hold a meeting. We do anticipate getting up and running in the first two weeks of February, and I am very much looking forward to see what the business owners and the mayor and myself can, can start the year off with in regard to that.
Good.
Well, I was just going to move right on forward to shared services. We had a shared services committee meeting this morning at the Red Hook Town Hall, and the consultants reviewed the segment of the project that we're at right now is, they've identified several options that we could move forward with in regard to shared services. And it's really fantastic the way that they are broken down so that one sort of lends itself to another, but each can be achieved individually as well. So at this point, I'm going to say, you may or may not have seen the media release, the consultants issued one, but I know Mayor Cranna did one as well. There is a public meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow evening, right here at the Village Hall at 7:00. The consultants will be presenting the recommendations, and there is a huge opportunity for public input. Please be aware that that is not your only avenue of feedback and input. You can follow the link that's posted on our website and interact with the consultants that way. I believe that we will all be broadcast on Panda tomorrow night as well.
Right.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Comments? Tom?
The only day I got was the invoices that I just handed into you to the current fire trucks and the list of officers for 2,000.
Okay.
The fire company.
That'll save me a memo tomorrow then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We talked about that tonight.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead. Karen first.
I'll let you.
She's pretty.
I just, there's a few things. I mean, I love what you guys are doing with the riverfront and the walk on the river. And I'm just thinking in my head, there's a lot of money to be spent on both projects. Are you looking into grants yet or are you going to? I know we can't probably do anything without grants.
Yeah, I mean, the, as far as the waterfront, there were a number of grants secured in 2006, '07, '08, in that period. Some of those have expired. One of them, one of the bigger ones, we're working, I've been working with Trustee Azroti, and this was a Parks grant. That was a $300,000 matching grant, which I, Susan and I went down to Statsburg and met with Representative Parks to retool the grant because originally that grant was for acquisition, but the property was purchased with other funds. So rather than let the grant disappear, we were hoping to go back and say, okay, can we use, can we still have that money but do something else with it related to our waterfront? And so that is, hasn't disappeared yet because we've, we've paid some attention to it. And as far as, you know, what the RPI students are going to do, you know, I think for us to, you know, develop the waterfront down there and go ask for money, because we know we're going to have to go do that, seek, seek money elsewhere to actually build it, it'll really help to have something visual, to have a model, to have some drawings, to have, you know, rather than say, hey, I'm going to make this beautiful park down there, give me some money. You know, you want to say, here, look at that, isn't that cool? And I also think, you know, to have a model or a map lets all of us look at it and sort of reflect on the design. It's a lot easier to react to something that is right in front of your eyes than sort of, I'm imagining this, Dave's imagining that, we're having an argument about where we're going to put the picnic table, you know. So I guess the long answer to your question is the money is a ways off, but I think that this is a step in chasing money eventually.
And it may have to be done in phases.
Absolutely.
Not only just because of money, but just because of time. You know, a lot of those things can't be performed simultaneously, and so you need to break that into manageable segments, if you will. In regard to the Greenway Grant, part of the conversation that we had with Morris Associates when we went down and did our walkthrough was the type of grant funding that would be available for the actual execution of the design. The grant that we're currently working with allows for design only.
Right.
So one of the things that came up, interestingly enough, was sometimes it's go big or go home. And if you have a plan that actually requires more funding, sometimes there's more funding available to you or more funding opportunities that are available to you.
Exactly.
Exactly. So with some of the drainage issues and some of the natural water that we have, even the grade, you know, is particularly challenging there to be able to come up with, you know, one of the parameters that we're working within is to make it ADA accessible. one of the parameters that we're working within is to make it ADA accessible. And so, you know, there's a certain incline per inch that you're allotted for ADA accessibility guidelines, and so it is quite challenging.
But there are funding opportunities available when you're getting something to make something ADA compliant, which is how we got that part.
Absolutely, of funding.
Right.
Yeah. Both representatives had ideas for, for funding, and with the ADA compliance that it brought in.
Helps.
Semesters, yeah.
It does.
David?
A couple of things. The sidewalks of the village around is very dangerous, and the people aren't shoveling, and it's just, something's got to be done. I mean, people walk in the street, it's dark out or whatever, they're going to get hit. And the parking in the village lot continues, I don't see anybody doing anything about that because of smoke cloud around the vehicles.
We've increased, we've seen an increase in tickets and with regards to people parking illegally, we've seen, I forgot what the percentage was, but we have seen an increase in terms of tickets being done.
Well, I know there's overnight parking right in front of my house almost every night.
Okay, but just so you're aware, and of course, you know, this month, I'm looking back to the month of December, but of the violations that we have, virtually half of them were for no overnight parking. So it is beginning to be addressed more regularly then.
There's a vehicle behind the dancer schoolhouse, that lot back there by the fence by Art and Morris. It's been there since October. It was vandalized Halloween, even with, back when it was special.
Is the city I built properly or Panzer?
It's in that lot. I don't know whose property that is.
That line is a little funny, David, because they're, we own part of it and Panzer.
It's along the fence line.
Yeah. It's very, I'd have to see it.
The car went there for since October.
Yeah, it may not be our line, it may not be our lot. That line is very, literally very funny. That's a very well-made...
That's in the lot by the school, boy.
Yeah. It's a very, it's, you know, when we drew that, that's a very strange line. I'd have to look at it.
Well, it's, yeah, we could take a look and see if it's...
If it's ours, then we'll get it out.
They're all out there, you can see where they clouded around them, so.
Yeah. I don't think it ever hurts to, to call our, call the sheriffs and remind them about overnight parking, you know?
When we made the reminder, Joel's right, when we made the reminder, we did see the increase in tickets coming, but still not what we like. Anything else?
Decisions about the issues of zoning? Has any decision been made on that?
My, I spoke with the board last week at this since I'm leaving office in two months. It's not an issue that I'm going to continue to push. The board will continue to look at this. We have gotten some more resumes in from other zoning enforcement officers. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to put a, you know, to, to put a decision in place with only two months left in office. That's a decision that this board and the incoming mayor will continue to look at. I didn't think it was appropriate for me to do it at this particular time.
For that.
But the board is continuing, we are continuing to get zoning enforcement officer resumes that, that are coming in.
Thank you.
It's not, as far as I'm concerned, it's not a dead issue, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to take up that challenge since I'm not the individual that's going to be overseeing that individual. But it is still, mission continues. Yes, no?
What's that contract run through?
I don't know off the top of my head, David.
Or, or is that a contract at all?
Yes, it's a contract that we have with, with the town, yeah. I don't know. There is nothing further. I want to remind everyone again, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock upstairs, and there is a webpage that we link on our village webpage to follow the shared services study. Again, this is simply a recommendation from the consultants.